All right, so as we open the March 14th zoning board of appeals hearing, first on the agenda is old new business. Um, let's see. Who do we have here? I mean, 'cause we don't have...
Yeah.
Some of the voting members are... So, I'd like to make a motion that we'll hold off on that for sometime this summer, perhaps.
Sometime, maybe in the fall.
Yeah. Okay. So, it being seven o'clock, Abington zoning board of appeals will hear petition on Thursday, March 14th, for the petitioner CE Development LLC, PO Box 244 Whitman, for special permit under 17532I for an in-law apartment at 110 Cynthia Road, property located on assessors map 51 Lot 16C in the R30 zone. Are the petitioners here?
Yes.
Come on up. Have a seat.
How you doing?
I'm good. How are you?
Good. Just looking at the application. What zone is this in?
I'm not exactly sure, but I do understand that the application was filed incorrectly.
It is?
Yes.
And what is your plans? What would you like to do?
We would like to request a continuance so that the correct... The application can be filed correctly.
So, you want to... Do you want to withdraw without prejudice or do you want to continue? Can they continue and refile?
Yep.
Okay. I just noticed that on there, there's no district, zoning district, so if you make sure it's on the application for the next one.
Okay. Because the hearing said R30.
Yeah, but it just doesn't have it on the application at all, so... All right, so...
All right.
Want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the petitioner's request to continue...
About April 11th.
The petition until our hearing on April 11th. I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye. So, if anyone's in the audience for this, this is your notice that the hearing regarding this would be April 11th.
It's going to be... Say it was going to be republished too, Nancy?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
It will be republished?
Okay. Nice. See you then.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, and on to... That was what was it, R20 you said?
This said R30.
Okay.
Eleven, seven AM, 7 PM, so...
Okay.
It should be 7:05 because there's something that we continue from.
All right. All righty. Are we ready? We're a minute early on the other one, but... Excuse me. So, it being nearly 7:05, Abington zoning board of appeals will hear the petition of Mento Homes Inc., 1157 Washington Street Braintree for special permits under 17535, and waiver of environmental impact statements for lots 1 and 2 Linwood Street. Single-family homes will be located outside the floodplain. Driveways and lawn grading are to be located within the floodplain. Property is located on assessors map 8, lots 1 and 1A in the R30 zone.
Okay, and we have from the SOAR department, a proposal location of assessors plan in 8 lot 1 and 1A, substitute system development fees that must be paid prior to building department sign-off. Okay. So, 17535. Okay, how you doing?
Nancy, do you want copies of the...
No, okay.
Evening. Kyle Gavi representing Mento Homes, Dan Mento here tonight. The applicant is seeking a special permits for lots 1 and 2 on Linwood Street that lies partially within the floodplain and Wetlands Protection District. The lots were previously owned by the Ryerson family and was used as open pasture for horses and some farming. The floodplain shown on the 1976 town map encroaches on the front portion of the lots, which is highlighted on the plane. So, it's really on the very front end of the lots. The floodplain is not within a special theme of flood hazard zone. It's actually a zone X, which is not a flood zone. It is not associated with a wetland area subject to protection under the Wetlands Protection Act. The lots will contain single-family homes that will be constructed outside of the floodplain. So, we've placed dwellings outside of the floodplain. And there will be only driveway access and landscaping lawns and plantings within the flood zone. The proposed dwellings will be tied into the town sewer. The drainage flow for these lots, actually for the most part, flow away from the floodplain area. It flows towards the rear of the property, which is actually... It would be flowing more towards like Hunts Pond versus the other way. Kind of strange how that floodplain is even there, to be honest with you. As I said, the dwellings will be tied into town sewer. There will be no discharge of any end... That flow into a water body. These lots are not subject to any DEP stormwater regulations as they are not within a wetland or close to one. And the final grading will be consistent with the present grading. So, we've basically designed the houses to sit behind the floodplain line with only lawn area and driveway access in the front. Utility tie-in for sewer and water, but that's it. The rest of it will just be left. It's either grass or existing field.
Okay. Is there any eastwards back there or anything like that on that property?
No, this... Behind these lots is still... Is still property that belongs to the Ryerson family where they had the barn and where they still live today.
There's a couple houses going up there right now, as we think.
Yeah, correct.
That's it, right? I mean, there's no... Yeah, I'm trying to picture it because I've seen the new house that went into the field. And which one is going to be the next one after that?
On the left-hand side. So, if you're looking at the...
I mean, which figure?
Lot 2.
Lot 2. So, it's kind of caulk-eyed a little bit, right? It's not straight to the road.
Yeah, the house you're talking about is...
Yeah, okay. There you go. All right. And so, this one's going to like step. Then is that... That one's going to be even with the other one or how's that go?
Yeah, they kind of run parallel with the property lines, perpendicular. I mean, the front of the house runs perpendicular to the center of the property lines.
Okay. So, is there space between the houses?
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Twenty-four feet.
The set-back... The required setbacks are 20 feet. They're... This one is 23 and a half. This one's 21, and then 21 to the other one. And what I was saying earlier, the old... Well, this is...
Oh, there you go.
...basically popular.
Yeah.
You're looking at these two lots here.
Right, so this one's already built, right?
Yeah, and this is the Ryerson farm.
And this is a house here built, yeah. So, you got one... It's kind of caulk-eyed this way.
Right, and this is still... This area behind here still belongs with the farm.
Okay, so they didn't sell the whole field? All right.
Yeah, so you're only looking... Yeah.
Oh, okay. Okay, I can see that now. Yeah, all right. All right.
Yeah, right out behind here is actually coming in off the road, which you have Hunts Pond Lane and, you know...
I know there's water issues back there. I know that for a fact because I live in the general area.
Unfortunately, the floodplain's in the front, of course.
Yeah, yeah.
Kind of strange.
So...
And once again, it's only a special... We're looking at a special permit. There's no variance or anything like that.
Right, is there basements or just slab?
Basements, full foundations. Yeah, they're full foundations with mostly kind of like walkouts in the back, new walls with...
Marshall, refresh my recollection. For one and two families, does it go to conservation as well?
Oh, yeah. Conservation will have to sign off on this before...
In the town engineer and everything?
And they'll look at it and make determination whether or not they want an engineer or botanist to look at it to determine whether they're within the wetlands and if to make a determination. I'm assuming they're not, or maybe they already have.
I thought you said they signed off on one of them, didn't they?
He brought it to my office. You brought it to my office.
I have one in-lot, two up.
Which is where I think I actually caught this business with the being in the Wetland Protection Overlay District.
Yeah, you brought it up, Marshall.
And I think I was the one who picked that up, but for it to get to my desk, it would have had to have been signed off on by conservation.
Okay, okay. So, we don't have any problems with frontage or setback or anything like that on these lots? It's just basically because you're within...
They're in the overlay district.
The overlay district.
It says they have to get a special permit for a one or two family through this board.
Any concerns since you started construction on the other two residents from any of the neighbors with increased flooding or anything like that in properties or anything?
Have you hit a lot of water? I mean, that's... I'm surprised... I'm very surprised you're putting basements in. I really am. I know it's a wet area.
We dug test pits up there for the Ryersons, and the water table was pretty low, actually.
And all behind here, all behind the houses, this is not wetlands? What is this we're talking about? Is it uplands?
Oh, yeah, it's all uplands. Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. I mean, this side is up...
Elevation, uh, 154. If you're getting down towards Hunts Pond, you're down 120, 30 feet above.
It's all goes down.
Oh, yeah, substantially. Oh, yeah. This is probably the highest street going in either direction.
So, you're going to keep a good distance away from in the back. There is... They still own the property. That's good signal. I mean, no more building there. It's going to be those two houses if Eric passes.
No.
All right, okay. Anything else, guys?
I don't have anything at this point.
Can we ask questions?
Yes, you can, and I'm going to open it up to the floor. So, I will open it up to the floor, and you can ask some questions. Sir, yeah, first your name and your address.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
My name is Jim Paul. I live at 125 Linwood Street, which is directly across the street. So, I have a few questions. You would ask if any neighbors had flooding problems? The answer was no. I was never asked. So, how do you know nobody had?
I have heard of it.
Because I had a lot in my basement.
Not that we were aware of.
But you answered no, but... So, did you go around to the neighbors and ask the neighbors?
I would think if there was a problem, I'd be aware or notified, actually.
It never would have gone to me to notify you I had no idea who it was.
So, is this...
But I think you answered no kind of bothered me, guess, just saying I don't know if I knew an answer.
In fairness to the applicant, I asked, were you aware of any neighbors who brought it to your attention or something in that effect?
General question.
But if there are issues, we'd like to hear it.
We'd like to hear it, definitely.
I guess I haven't tested it, but anyway. But you had also mentioned about the water and bathroom property, saying that you know that people have water problems.
Well, I just know... I know that there's a drain... I walked it. There's a drainage behind there. I know that.
Well, I know people who live back there, and all of one of them do get water.
I'm sure if it's like this, they're showing the flow goes down to that area.
And I have a general question. I was once told that the tear-downs were on the stone walls that are naturally there to need a special...
Permit, really?
I bet that doesn't mean it's true. I'm saying, but it was the former commissioner who told me. Doesn't mean it's true, but that's what I was told. But the stone wall was torn down to one of these houses. So, do you need an exception or is it...
I'm not sure about that.
I'd never heard that.
Have you ever heard of that?
I don't know what it even fall under.
Nothing. If it had more than four feet of unbalanced fill, there would be a... Maybe a permit would be required, but...
But not removal of the stone wall?
Removal of the stone wall is... If it's on, in this case, Mento's property, he can do with it as he pleases.
Okay. Well, I have never...
Well, it's a good question, but I don't think we've ever heard that one.
And then the fire that we had was they made reference to, and I'm probably not calling right, both Wetland Protection District directly across the street is protected. Does that matter?
That's...
Well, that's what we're here...
What was the question again?
He's asking if the property across the street is protected.
It is.
It is wetlands, if you're saying.
It is. We're not allowed to do anything until we both own property.
You have houses on it, right?
Behind it.
Oh, behind it. Oh, okay. All right, okay. Oh, is that the one in the woods? Okay.
Yeah.
So, they're within so many feet of the line. The line goes across the street through the road, correct? Am I wrong?
No, it does appear to be. The Wetland Protection Overlay District, that's 1976 map, is drawn with a... Painted with a very broad brush. A lot of what's considered the overlay district, which does not mean it's wetlands. It's just something that this town has, this map, that says they painted this area. Anything in it, we want you to take a look at because we feel potentially there could be something. Being in the wetlands is much different than being in the Wetland Protection Overlay District.
Right, right.
And that's what the petitioner is asking, is relief from 17535, which is the floodplain and Wetlands Protection District.
For the driveway, correct?
Right, and that's really the only thing going in, is a means of, you know, egress, access to the house. You know, probably would... But the purpose is basically to protect or preserve the marshes and bogs, ponds, watercourses on adjoining wetlands. So, whenever someone is building within 100 feet of that or, in this case, is using it to get to the house, they have to come to a board, in this case, our board, and just say, this is what I want to do, and we say, okey-dokey, or no. So, you know...
Anything else?
No, thank you.
Did you want to talk to him about... Do you have issues?
No.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
No, thank you.
Go ahead.
Janet Perfinsky, 135 Linwood Street. I don't know if this is the venue at this time, but is there going to be future development on the Ryerson property? There are already two houses, planning two more houses. Is there anything going on that would be in that of the houses that are going to be sitting on Linwood Street, facing Linwood Street?
Is there any future projects?
I know of none. I originally did the work for the Ryersons, and if they were going to do it, we would have already done it. And I think they... In my talking with the Ryersons, they wanted to keep the farm as it was, and that's why we left a big area out there.
Leave a big area.
But, I mean, we originally had a sub... We originally had a layout with putting a road in and having... I think there was like eight lots out there. We discussed it, and we said, why not do this? They were happy with this, and that's what they did. So, but not to say that they couldn't, but there's not really enough frontage for them to develop back there.
No, there isn't. There isn't. They're not leaving much for them.
I mean, there's 144 feet roughly of frontage remaining for...
There'd be houses on top of houses back there.
Yeah, but you couldn't... You only have 144 foot of frontage, and you need 110 per lot, so you don't... There's nothing left for two lots, really. And to put a road in, the road would be 310 feet to the first house lot at about $600 a foot. There's 180... You're already... You're well past the profit of building costs, you know.
So, we can't say...
But not to say that the Ryersons couldn't do it.
I'd say it won't happen, but it would be difficult to do. That's what they're trying to say. Any more questions?
No.
I mean, if anything was done there, it would have to go in front of the planning board and maybe back to you people or something, so you would be notified.
Okay.
So, basically, what you're telling us is basically what you're putting these four houses in, in a general area, and you're leaving a lot of space to be left alone.
And only two of them are in any way impacting the overlay district?
They're just touching it, yeah.
Simply as a means of...
And it's really just the driveways impacting it, right?
You're not building back here and disturbing all the back there. You're leaving that wide open, and you're also leaving a big piece of property in between the house back there. Still have some of the field, so the farm still has some of the field. All right, so are any more questions? No, okay. Back to the board. Any questions or concerns? Marshall, any concerns?
None.
I don't see any concerns. I think this, you know, it's a minimal to zero impact on the area and the neighbors, so I don't see any reason to deny it myself.
I must say aloud that I'm surprised you're putting basements in. That general area is fairly wet, but, I mean, you know, build this, so... But besides that, again, you're leaving a water area. You're not taking every inch, and you're just in that small area where you're touching the floodplain. So, I really don't have much of a problem with it.
My only question would be, this is two separate applications.
Right.
It looks like this was advertised as... We should probably break this up into...
Yes, break them into...
Separate, yeah, okay.
It just didn't make sense to do two separate ads because it was the same applicant.
Oh, sure, okay. But in terms of the voting...
Yeah, well, two motions.
Exactly, yeah, okay. All right, so in that case, I will make a motion to approve the petition of Mento Homes Inc., 1157 Washington Street Braintree for special permits under 17535 and a waiver of environmental impact statement on lot 1, Linwood Street. Single-family home will be located outside the floodplain. Driveway and lawn grading to be located within the floodplain. The property is located on assessors map 8, lot, I believe that's 1, yeah, lot 1, in the R30 zone.
I will second that.
All through?
Aye.
All right, go to the other one.
Yeah, I will make a motion to approve the petition of Mento Homes Inc., 1157 Washington Street Braintree for a special permit under 17535 and a waiver of environmental impact statement on lot 2, Linwood Street. Single-family home will be located outside the floodplain. Driveway and lawn grading to be located within the floodplain. The property is located on assessors map 8, lot 1A in the R30 zone.
I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye.
Okay. You're lucky with everything.
Thank you. Marshall.
All right, Abington zoning board of appeals will hear the petition of Dana George, 33 Stetson Street Whitman, for special permits under 17521G3 and 174G5 for bottling of beverages and manufacturing of assembly of goods at 748 Brockton Ave. Property located on assessors map 8, lot 102 in the highway commercial zone.
Okay, this has no bearing on the SOAR system at all. Okay. Gentlemen!
Gentlemen!
Knock again? Wow!
We enjoy spending time with...
Hopefully, it sticks this time.
That's strange. Very strange. What do you got for us?
So, we are... We're here to request two special permits. We... Four or five years ago, when we opened our current location, we had to request a combination of four special permits and variances to operate at 491 Washington Street. This new potential location, being in the highway commercial district, Washington Street is in central business district, only requires us going for those same permits that we have currently to request two special permits, one for manufacturing, one for bottling.
The old 477 Washington is in the central business district. This is your new location.
Correct, the new location.
Yep.
This used to be a garage that I'd get my stickers at for my vehicle. Across from Walmart, right?
Next to...
Right next to the liquor store from Walmart, yes. Next to the liquor store.
Okay. Is he going to use a magnet and pull the guys in or something?
They still intend to give the stickers out, I'm sure.
No, I don't think so. Those are vehicle stickers.
I know.
So, let's see. You folks are looking for about 17521G3.
No, we're not approving the outside area or anything like that, the patio, nothing like that. That's going to do with us, right?
Not... That is not allowed. They're... That's allowed, I believe.
Correct.
By right.
Oh, by right? Okay, all right, good.
And the...
Better.
The only two things that they need is bottling of beverages and manufacturing and assembling of goods, both of which are special permits. Other than that, everything else is...
Everything's good, everything's good.
Good to you.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Those are...
Bottling.
Bottling, yeah, it's in there. I looked it up. Let's...
Yeah.
The wrong one.
G5.
I'm sure I got the right ones. So, you're going to be doing the food thing again or just... Just we're talking about... I'm just asking about...
We kind of have a resident food truck now. A friend of ours is running it almost every weekend, yeah. As far as us producing food and making food in-house, we're not there yet.
Not your thing.
It looks like you got some... A little more space here.
Yes. And some more parking.
You had to have less.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, the parking's... That's going to be great.
I don't have any questions on this.
And then is this... What are the approvals? I ask this every time. Board of Health, they involved in this one?
We checked with them initially when we first opened and asked them if they had to approve anything we were doing. They had to look into it because we were a new business at the time, and they said nothing to do with us. Until we entertain the notion of making food on premises, then they would get involved, but they have told us that...
Alcohol?
No.
No.
It's all state, right? Your licensees are...
ABCC and through the federal government. We have a license from the TTB, the Acco Tax and Trade Bureau.
I tell you, the arctic tech you have, he's making a lot of money doing different buildings and stuff like that.
Thanks for that reminder.
Any questions besides that?
I don't.
No? Marshall, anything?
No.
All right, I'm going to open it up to the floor. Gentlemen? Nothing?
No.[1551.12]
The only two things that they need is bottling of beverages and manufacturing and assembling of goods, both of which are special permits. Other than that, everything else, they...
Everything's good.
Good to you. Manufacturing.
One, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Those are...
Bottling.
Bottling, yeah, it's in there. I looked it up. Let's...
Yeah.
The wrong one.
G5.
I'm sure I got the right ones. So you're going to be doing the food thing again, or just... Just we're talking about... I'm just asking about...
We kind of have a resident food truck now. A train of ours is running there almost every weekend, yeah. As far as us producing food and making food now, we're not there yet.
Not your thing.
It looks like you got some... A little more space here.
Yes. And some more parking.
You had to have less.
Yeah. Yeah, right. The parking's... That should be great.
All right. I don't have any questions on this.
And then is this... What are the approvals? I ask this every time. Border Health, they involved in this one?
We checked with them initially when we first opened and asked them if they had to approve anything we were doing. They had to look into it because we were a new business at the time, and they said nothing to do with us. Until we entertain the notion of making food on premises, then they would get involved, but they have told us that...
Alcohol?
No.
It's all state, right? Your licensees are...
Right. ABCC and through the federal government. We have a license from the TTB, the Echo Tax and Trade Bureau.
I tell you, the arche tech you have, he's making a lot of money doing different buildings and stuff like that.
Thanks for that reminder.
Any questions besides that?
I don't.
No? Marshall, anything?
No.